Welcome to Planning Commission Meeting on May 4, 2016. We'd like to excuse Bruce Fallon from here tonight and Tracy Tagg so far, maybe she'll come in, but we have four of us and we will proceed. So, let's go ahead and start tonight's events. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you'll, everybody please rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so, the first item on today's agenda is a applicant with a preliminary plat request for Eagle Cove, and we'll go ahead and hear from staff, Mr. Anderson on that.
It's been a few months since you approved this project in its original form, and quite frankly, not much has changed with what's proposed tonight. They're proposing to amend the approved preliminary plat so that it can be approved as a master plan development, so we have a handful of different tools that we can use to approve developments. One is, I'll just call it a standard subdivision, which means that if the minimum lot size in a particular zoning district is, for example, 12,000 square feet, every lot has to have at least 12,000 square feet in it. We have minimum lot width requirements, lot depth requirements, different things like that, and those minimums have to be met, standard subdivision. Then, we have another tool called a master plan development, and with that tool, let's say that property's zoned for 12,000 square foot lots, you know, in essence, there's some flexibility built into the language that we have in the ordinance that allows for developers, for example, to simply have a project where the average lot size is 12,000 square feet, and we're flexible relative to what the lot width is and lot depth on particular lots in the project. And also with master plan developments, we allow for setbacks that are different from what we have for standard subdivisions and just your typical lot in the city. And that's why we're talking about this tonight. This was originally approved as a standard subdivision, and as such, today, the applicant has to have a 25-foot front setback and a 25-foot rear setback. The applicant would like a 20-foot rear setback instead of 25 feet. So, we're going through this exercise so that the project can be approved as a master plan development, and they can, and as the city, that flexibility can be granted with the approval, and they can go from a 25-foot rear setback to a 20-foot rear setback, so...
Can you explain why the applicant is requesting 20 instead of 25?
I think I know, but I'll let him answer that if you don't mind. Let me just mention, kind of to wrap things up for me, that nothing is changing relative to the location of lots, lot lines, streets, it's really just an issue of setbacks, so...
What was the space right here?
Part of that is a storm drain detention.
Um, the detention...
Did I get that right?
Let me, oh, I'm sorry. Let me get to the next page.
There were two lots that had that detention.
I believe that's an error in the line work that they submitted. I see there's one lot number.
Yeah, I was thinking of this.
Yeah, the detention ponds there, this is an error in the cap that they've...
Yeah, it's just one lot, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the DRC reviewed this, we recommend that it be approved.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no questions from the Commission for Staff, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Evening, Brian Prince with Ivory Development. Dave is correct, so, nothing has changed at all from what you approved a few months ago. It is the exact same design. The reality is, there was a miscommunication with our contract engineer, LEI, in what we had applied for, and that is my fault and it's our, it's our team's fault. We were under the impression that we had made application for, for the master plan for this setback scenario. The reason we needed is just to accommodate some of those. In designing this subdivision, we do a lot fit analysis and notice that some of these knuckle corner lots were a little tight, as far as the depth. The widths are great, and so, all this is, is to help some of those knuckle lots fit some, some floor plans where the building pocket depth is a little tight.
Doesn't, so this doesn't necessarily mean that all the lots will go from 25 to 20, it just allows you some leverage for some of those lots you're referring to?
Exactly, yeah. So, I mean, most of the square interior lots are just fine, but when looking at those fits, Kyle, six months ago, we recognized that on some of those corner knuckle lots, they were pretty tight, and so, that is the proposal. I just wanted to reiterate that we haven't come back and have added a lot, we haven't changed any of the design, it's just to help us fit a few floor plans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seems pretty simple, members. Is there any concerns, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the preliminary plat for Eagle Cove, the amended preliminary plat.
We have a motion by Commissioner Nelson.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Wilkinson. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
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 The next item on our agenda for the night is a preliminary, oops, sorry, I'll go ahead and skip that one, I just did that one, but another preliminary plat for the Maple Park Estates.
Thank you. Couple of months ago, you made a recommendation on the Nelson annexation, and then the City Council ended up approving it. That is, in essence, this property that we're talking about here. We annexed a couple of other properties at that time as well, but this project includes 33 acres, 88 lots. It is proposed as a master plan development in the R-112 zone, and in short, there's really nothing all that unique to talk about. You know, that when we talked about the Nelson annexation and the Stillman annexation before that, last year and the year before, we talked quite a bit about utilities and why properties on this side of 2550 East hadn't developed before, because we, we hadn't yet had a developer that had stepped up to the plate, so to speak, and that was willing to commit to bear the cost to deal with a power deficiency that we have there, as well as a sewer deficiency, and those problems have been resolved. In fact, have any of you in the last few weeks been out in this part of the city? I don't get out of the office as often as I should, so last week, I think it was on Friday, I drove north on 2550 East and noticed that Canyon Crest Estates, I think it is, Canyon Vista, thank you. Canyon Vista Estates, which is right here, they had the construction staking in place for their first phase here, and in the background, you could see the work that's going on relative to this project over here, and they had just finished up some work on, on 400 North here. Then Monday, happened to be out, same area, and they had followed the construction stakes and had the roads cut in for that first phase here, and there was more equipment here. I just mentioned that kind of anecdotally, partly because the proposal's somewhat boring, it's pretty straightforward, 88 lots meets our requirements, we recommend that it be approved, but also, this area is going to transform pretty quickly, I think. It seems as though there's something of a pent-up demand for lots in this area. I say that largely because of how quickly this built out here, other projects in the city as well, I've just been amazed at how quickly they've been developed and then how fast homes have been, been built in them. So, I think, you know, like the, the two surrounding projects, this one probably will develop pretty quickly.
Dave, are you comfortable with the condition of the six-foot masonry on the railroad? I'm almost thinking it needs to be eight on the railroad.
Six-foot match is what we did on the project to the north, and I think where our, our concern is not, for example, noise from the trains or anything like that, it is simply keeping kids off the tracks. I think that's sufficient.
I just know some of the major arteries we have, arteries not probably the right word, but...
On UDOT roads, yeah, they'll put bigger sound walls.
We have eight-foot walls, so Fourth North, all up and down that is eight-foot walls. There's even eight-foot walls on Spanish Islands going on, on 100, 100 South. Those are eight-foot walls.
No, those are on six. Those are on six.
Really?
The ones that I'm picturing that are bigger are ones that UDOT installed on US 6.
I walk on that wall all the time. I walk on that street all the time, and that wall's taller than me. Granted, I'm only 5'10 and a half or so, but it's more than an inch and a half taller than I am.
We had some discussions when we looked at this project about whether there should be some kind of enhanced screening or buffer between these lots and the tracks, and I can't remember, we talked about the grade, the tracks aren't really elevated at all at that point, if I remember right.
Does the railroad...
They are a little bit, not much.
They are.
Does the railroad company have requirements when we build next to them?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Where does the six-foot wall, where is it proposed to go? Just along the track or down that triangle piece, too?
Basically, from here to here, and then we would anticipate that as these properties develop, the same...
Oh, and then just follow along?
Same would occur, yeah.
That first lot is somewhat exposed.
You know, that's, that's a good point. Another condition that we've imposed on these projects over here is that they propose some kind of uniform fencing. I don't think that we probably would want to require a masonry wall here.
No.
But for the reason that you're pointing out, it probably would be good to talk about having a fence installed from day one here, just as these lots and homes develop. I'm picturing more of just a vinyl fence, which is what I would expect that, you know, they'd use throughout these projects here. I think that's, I think that's a great idea, and I think that's something that the applicant would...
Just a rude comment, I, I have, the guy, I didn't talk to him today, but the owner of that little piece stopped in our office today.
The triangle piece?
Yeah, so it may be, if that's a moot point that...
Oh, they're moving ahead?
...the whole masonry all the way down, you know, he said, I don't know where he's going to be out with that, but maybe, you know, I don't think I'm opposed to the vinyl, only as long as, if we end up doing the, doing that, doing the masonry, that, that's a, that's a phase that's by the ways out, so maybe...
Maybe just right in the, in the condition that you provide safety for the eastern border, and if you, if you adopt the next property over, then that, then that safety is the next property, or it's the existing property.
Yeah, if that makes good sense, yeah.
So, on highways, on Highway 6, you're having an eight-foot fence for sound?
No.
No?
We require a six-foot wall.
Okay.
But there have been places where UDOT has done something taller.
For sound?
Uh, sound, yeah. And I think if we're trying to address sound, we're probably talking about something that's going to be substantially greater than just even eight feet, and...
Two foot more wouldn't make that much difference, is what you're saying?
That probably wouldn't be enough, and to get it, to get a wall there, that might actually help a little bit with the train noise, you sort of destroy some of the ambiance here. I mean, yes, they're next to train tracks, but also, you've got a pretty great view out there that, I'm guessing people...
I think people buy there knowing what they're getting into.
It's funny, we still get complaints from people that live next to the tracks elsewhere in town.
A track that's been there for 100 years, but they're going to complain that they bought next to it?
It happens regularly.
Wish I was more powerful than the railroad. Gee whiz.
Can I ask a quick question? I don't know, I guess it doesn't really have anything to do with this, should I wait and ask later? What's the plan to develop that road to the south? I mean, I drive, we've had to all drive up and down that road if we're headed to Mapleton or Springville since 400 North has been closed, and that road is just crazy with potholes and all kinds of things. Is that road going to be fixed, and who's going to fix it?
From here to here, the northern part of it, including some on the south side of the center line, will be rebuilt as phases of these two developments are constructed. So, that for me, you know, I talk about maybe the timing that would be followed as these projects get built out. I'm usually not really anxious to see things happen really fast, but in this case, that certainly is an upside.
And we have a development right here going, and that's all from here to here. There's another, there's another development right here going.
So, here, and unfortunately here, they don't have a whole lot of frontage, but they'll improve their side of the road and that frontage that they have, and that's just the program that we have. Those improvements come with development, aside from the normal maintenance that we do, and...
We deal with this quite often, it's an old county road that is chip sill and chip sill, and pah-ho fill and pah-ho fill. So, as part of the development, we require that they remove that and build it to city standards, so we're getting facilities, something that will really maintain the nice... So, part of the development, I mean, the utilities tear up most of the road, but they'll remove all the, all the, a good amount of stuff, base, and building, correct?
Alright, so is there any questions?
Oh, it will widen as well.
To the north.
I think you'll be happy with what, what happens.
Well, I imagine it's just going to be used a lot, more and more as time goes on, so...
Alright, any more questions from the Commission for Staff? Okay. Is it necessary to talk to the applicant? Not that we don't want to, but is there any questions? I mean, no reason to... Yeah, no reason to have you come up if there's no questions, so, any questions for the applicant? Okay, if there's no applicant questions, I would entertain a motion for the Maple Park Estates.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Maple Park Estates with the conditions that are outlined, as well as the condition that, to the east, that it be safe, right, is that...
Provide safety barrier.
Safety barrier for the railroad tracks, will that be added to the conditions?
I have a motion with Commissioner Tagg.
I'll second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Tanner. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Wilkinson.
Aye.
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 Next item on the agenda for the night is other business, and at this time, we'd like to invite staff to come up and present to us a discussion with some changes to our discussion, or to our construction standards, proposed changes to our construction standards.
If you're okay, I'll stay here, and maybe, and run the computer as well. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time going through each of these. I'll open it, perhaps give some highlights here. Our intent was to get these in front of you this month, not as a public hearing, not necessarily as an action item yet, but to give you backgrounds, so over the next month, you can look at them. If you have questions, my door's open, please call, and that way, we can prepare for next month, so you're, you're ready to act, and I don't have to spend a lot of time in this room, so...
Is this something you do, try to do, like yearly, update your standards, and I see you kind of jump around at different places?
Yeah, and we just provided the changes, we certainly can give you the whole document with red marks.
No, I'm just curious.
Thank you, Brad.
So, this is a recommendation to the City Council from us to approve the changes?
Not tonight, not has to be published yet.
But eventually.
We would anticipate having a public hearing in June, and then, we'd ask you to make a recommendation.
So, I can walk through highlights quick, I don't think we need to spend time unless you have questions, but it kind of gives you a background.
Now, you're just, staff informing us of things that are being done, it'll give you time to do research, then the public hearing, and then we'll move forward, so, inform us.
So, so, quickly, building permits, state code has changed on how building permits are received. Previously, the city required all improvements to be completed. Now, if there's an all-weather surface road and fire code is met, fire protection's there, and we have a bond, we, we need to issue a permit, so...
This is horrible, by the way, honestly.
This is tough.
It's awful, so, what happens is that we are required now by state law to issue building permits for houses and developments before the streets are done, which means we end up having people move in...
Before the streets are done.
Before the streets are done, and we have people complain about, it's road based, so I mean, in theory, it's, it's passable, but...
I will say, I don't see the extreme happening often, but it could.
We've had it a few times, in my experience, where it's happened, and we have, we have residents that are tired of washing their car every day, for example, and stuff like that. It's just, it's a bad situation, inspectors have a hard time getting in and out of projects and around.
What's the purpose of this change?
To accommodate builders.
So, they issue a certificate of occupancy even before the road's done? Under this new scenario, they would?
I think, that's interesting as well.
It doesn't necessarily outline occupancy. It says the city cannot withhold a building permit. If there's insurance in place, a bond, and...
Of course, the permit is different, you know...
Building permit...
So, it's, it's December 21st, family's been living in, you know, the...
Uncle Johnny's house, yep.
And they want to be in their new house before Christmas, and by the way, you know, the mom's eight months pregnant, and they come to a council meeting, you know, I mean, that's, that's what you end up with, when the house is ready to be...
So, the city's trying to help people, that's good, what's wrong with that?
When the house, that's, that's it. Nobody stands in the way of that, so, issuing the permit for me, that's occupancy, you know, once the house is done, we will let the occupied, and...
Okay.
I didn't think I'd say a word on this time.
I see what you're saying, I mean, I, I've seen in closings that very scenario, you know, there's a lot, right?
Alright, next.
Just a second, what's the deal on the, the permits and the impact fees, and then it's crossed out for the entire plat? They really required it to be paid for the entire plat, previous to this?
For storm drain, we did.
We, we have a couple, we have a storm drain impact fee, and a water ride, you're paid with the plat.
Right, okay, so certain things would be required for the entire plat, but for the individual homes, you don't have to pay for all of those until they're developed, yeah?
And that's why, right, so you're seeing the, the rent is changed, as the strikeout is someone reviewing and saying, no, stop there, so...
Okay.
That, that lot impact fees will be paid with the building permit, but there are a few impact fees that get paid.
Yeah, infrastructure things need to, all be paid upfront, okay.
A reference to APWA specifications, that's just making it so every year, we don't have to come in and refer to a new APWA spec. This one is, DRC discussed quite a bit, I think there's more discussion we have, but we have areas in town where we have landfill, construction debris, or garbage buried in the ground. We don't want to put roads, parking lots, sidewalk on top of that, and buildings, too.
What, where in the city? I know, out beyond the old Kmart area, is that, is that essentially what this is referring to, or are there other areas?
That is a major area. There is an area in town where we are currently removing debris for residential subdivision, and coincidentally, it's construction debris, but we found some heavier metals that we're having to address, and...
So, they can still, they can still build there, it just says...
That makes sense, because you can, you know, there's some liability there, let somebody build on something that's releasing a, a gas that could be harmful, yeah?
And, and as we've talked in DRC earlier today, we've been, we've been bit on this once, and, and we have moved forward with this idea of there's formalizing that in here.
Do we need to put on there unless removed?
That's the intent, so that might make sense. That, that's exactly what we intend, so...
So, I would, I would, I would consider that the verbiage says unless removed.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Absolutely. We have dealt with this on the, on the plat you just approved today, that this was allowed, but we have some roads in the city that are deemed to minor collector roads. They, they gather cars, but typically, it's a lower ADT, lower cars on the, in some cases, we're okay with houses fronting on that, having driveways and accessing. This would say, the discussion of the front setback is maybe something you as a team want to think about, and we spent some time discussing that as well. I'd love you to put on that, but the critical thing is here, we want to be able to have the homes, whether it's a circular driveway, a side entry garage, somehow that they don't back out into the road, that they can come out forward to provide that safety. It, it also requires, because along the roads will have the six-foot walls, in front of those homes, we'd want a three-foot wall in the front yards to keep kids in there and provide safety, so...
Question for you on the masonry wall, we had a discussion a few months back and proposed a picture with some masonry wall changes. I know that's not for all masonry walls, but some of the ones that are along...
City-owned.
City-owned.
This, this would apply.
So, do we want to refer to a certain illustration or a certain style in this language? Because right now, it just says masonry, do we want something in here that refers to that new change?
I think so, my question perhaps, you know, as Dave and I speak, is that a Title 15 of construction standards? In some ways, I can see it going well.
Construction, honestly, construction standards, as a spec, I think it's something that gets specked out, like a lot of things, like probably, like in a demonstration.
There is some detail underneath that same paragraph.
It's got detail, so this is...
Decorative. It just doesn't say what our standard is, so decorative could be, your decorative be different than my decorative, right? It's always nice when documents support each other, construction standards maybe refers to 15, 15 supports to construction, and they, and they support each other?
Yeah. Yeah, throughout 15, we do refer to this, and this referred, it does, we have some places that overlap that soon, we should be seeing things to try to create that.
Since we just talked about this with the railroad, do you think that ought to be added to that first sentence, where it talks about interstates, collector streets? Or no?
Yes. The only question I would have is, do we have somewhere in Title 15, reference to the interstates? I'll, I'll do some research, but...
You said the first sentence, sorry.
It's in the second paragraph right here, Dave, we talk about fronting along arterial collector or interstates.
Yeah.
We don't reference railroads.
That makes, that makes perfect sense, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Good job. Only because it was, you know, 10 minutes ago.
No, this is right.
Now, on the, if a lot has a frontage on a minor collector street, a three-foot wall is required, it does not define what style of wall, or are we still under masonry?
Well, it says the wall will be decorative, block, brick, or similar materials. Is, you're talking about paralleling the frontage road?
On the property line.
On the property line. So, is this front yard fence all the way along the street?
Yes.
And it has to be a solid wall, it can't be a fence?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the idea is that along these types of roads, typically, there will be backyards up against it, so typically, there's going to be a six-foot masonry wall along those property lines.
So, what street would this be applicable to, a minor collector?
So, let me open, yeah, this PowerPoint back up, let me help illustrate. 1400 East is a minor collector. We have one, two, three, four, five, six homes that you can see are intended to be a little bit bigger. Those do gain access from 1400 East. The corner lots, we still try to keep in off the local roads, but this is perhaps the best example of what you see today.
So, you're also saying you would like the driveway and garage built in such a way that they don't have to back...
Yes.
...out into that collector?
Yep.
Yeah, I don't think we want to specify they must be circular, or they must be this.
But you should be able to, in the, within the footprint of, of your driveway, pull and then go out forward. But you should be able to, in the, within the footprint of, of your driveway, pull and then, uh, go out forward.
So like, for example, along a road like this, typically, it's gonna be backyards. So for me, part of the purpose of having the three foot masonry wall is that there's some consistency along the street.
Well, these aren't backyards here on the street, right? These would be front.
These are front, but this'll be, these'll be side yards with a six foot wall.
Yeah. Right.
On a good part of it, at least, um, and again, you know, neighboring developments, I think typically would have that six foot wall, so the idea is just step it down to three feet across the frontage of those lots, hopefully with a style of wall that matches, so there's some consistent look and feel along the street.
So driveways and sidewalks and things like that would have, well, would they just be open, or would they be...
Those would be the, the breaks in the wall.
Subdivision farther south, they can pull right out on, can't they, on some of those?
Yeah, I, I think that's some consideration here on fourteen hundred East, we gave us...
Keep it the same.
Is we do have homes that do access, um, we can't say we've seen an immediate problem that has been something we're, we're nervous about there. But, but the biggest complaint we get is, you know, and often, it's people who bought on that road, that as the town grows, it gets busier.
On the other side of the subdivision.
My, my kids are out on the street, you know, I'm nervous about that, safety and things like that, um, the wall, I think, provides that consistency, but also the safety side for...
Okay.
So at least there's a deterrent if somebody loses control and they're aiming for your house, they, they get, will hit a three foot wall first.
Yeah, and hopefully, kids stay in the yard and things like that, and they... Um, one of the things we did is, a lot of things have changed in the asphalt world, and some in the concrete as well. We got a consultant that does a lot of inspection, that, um, knows asphalt, concrete well, and he kinda went through and gave us...
We'll take your word on that one.
So some of this, this table's just changing how below thickness will allow sidewalk, um, and some pay factors involved. Video inspection, the city this year will be purchasing a video truck to inspect sewers and storm drain lines. Today, we have consultants go out, the contractor hires a consultant, provides a DVD with a video, and can see how the pipe looks.
Do you guys know what he's talking about?
Yeah. Richard used to talk about it.
I do.
Drinking, drinking cokes and watching dirty movies.
He did.
Yeah, you can tell it's a sewer.
That's what he used to say, seems like.
Anyway, we, we see at times in the inspection world, we've had people tell us that they've seen, where sometimes inspectors are pressured by people paying them. You know, we, we see it more in capacity tests, we'll test it over here, and it passes there, but it may not here. We like the ability of the city controlling that, so we're inspecting the lines, making sure they're ready.
Do you have people already, uh, you know, hired by the city that would fit that?
Yeah, we, we have the operators that run the jet trucks and things like that.
So this'll just be one other thing they pick up and learn to do?
Yeah, it's... Yeah, and as far as pay, it's, we have inspection fees when the developers come in, the inspection fees will cover that cost, uh, to inspect the line.
But it'll be done in-house, and so they, there's a standard that there's keeping across the board for everyone?
Yeah. City, city staff will be running the equipment, looking at it, and, and that, you know, the equipment's built to look at our existing lines and inspect it, but now we have the ability to go through the lines, so...
Yep.
Sounds smart.
This is more of the comments, as you get into the pavement, um, our consultant recommended, when you get into fifty percent of the thickness of asphalt, you really start to lose strength. So we wanted to cut that down to more than ninety percent. It gets into a lot of detail on testing and types of oils, so if...
I think we'll trust your consultants.
If you like asphalt, you're welcome to research. I can't say it's my forte either, I, I got a little bit of training from this consultant.
Sounds good.
What, this is perhaps, this is a good thing, and maybe to mention, we struggle in the fall with, with placing asphalt in cold weather. We want the ability to allow developers to get the asphalt down to avoid a road-based road all there, but we want a good product, and we, we see things that are getting done in October really having troubles. The last few years, we pulled, held pretty close to the date of the fifteen.
Thought it was always Thanksgiving that the batch plans closed.
And it's really temperature, it's often Thanksgiving. October fifteenth is a UDOT spec that we've had in our standards for a long time, but...
Safe.
We wanted to make ability to allow the developer to do that, the contractor to, so we came up with this table that they can put a, a layer of asphalt down, two and a half will be the minimum, that can still structurally hold vehicles. But then in the spring, they come back and overlay it, so it gives them the ability, but you'll see the total thickness gets thicker, so there is some penalty. And that penalty is there to encourage contractors and that to work to get it done earlier. If, if we don't give that, we see everything paved in the fall, so... This, this, I think, gives them the ability, but also protects the city.
I've heard the overlay is, is actually structurally, uh, more sound than just one thickness, is that true?
Um, often it is. If you get good adherence, and they clean it off, and get a tap coat, things down, it does. We did in the city for a long time, one inch overlays at, at the one-year warranty, and we see them come off consistently. Um, a two-inch overlay holds up much better, so that, that's why the two-inch overlay. Um, this is information on what the contractors have to submit to prove they're meeting our standards, as far as specifications of shop drawings and sorts of things, so... Not a lot in here, but mixed designs and things like that, they get pretty specific with, somewhat typical out there. Um, excavation permits, one of the biggest issues we've had is when property owners wanna do work in their driveway garage, or replace their driveway, which is in the city right away, they make them get an excavation permit. We've always had them, you know, we have in here that they need to post a bond of a thousand dollars, that's to protect the city from them doing, um, rough work, and really has to do with the curb we've got. That's tough on a homeowner, um, versus a contractor, they don't have those means. So we're proposing that that cash bond go away, however, any cuts in the curb need to be done by a professional that gets a, a full excavation permit. Rather than someone out there with their saw and a concrete blade trying to do the job, we want them to hire a professional, so...
I'd almost rather pay the thousand dollars than hire a contractor versus them.
Yeah, I mean, to cut a curb, it's a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars, so you're really not paying a lot.
Or if you have the ability, buy it at Ace Rents for fifty dollars an hour and have her done.
Yeah, the ones when they pave, they have a truck that comes out, and it gets the angles just right, and it's on a track. You can tell the difference when it's just a hand sawing concrete, and that's what we wanna avoid. Um, this is simple, we, we've had situations where they tried to place asphalt the day after they placed, couldn't get it, wanted to have a cure time, so they don't, you know, damage that. Some more of the asphalt, exciting stuff, that I'll let you read if you're, so inclined. Same thing here, as far as some recycled asphalt content, they recommended, we, we did allow twenty-five percent recycled asphalt, and we recommended at least a fifteen percent. Again, bit minus, surface course, that's a fancy way to say asphalt, and different oil contents. Bit minus, bit minus. Um, little clarification on cold weather concrete, they require that it's above freezing, but then also after placement, it needs to be proj- projected to be above there, so that, you know, no point in...
I would suggest there that... There are some things you can do if it's not thirty-two degrees, so they, or use, they have blankets that are used, that are, allow that, so... I can't, I don't think you can split just degree, I think, or proper tools and resources to prevent it from...
Yeah, and we, the rest of that's simple as... We, we do, and, and that's always been, when they pour it, it has to be above freezing. And then they can blanket it overnight, but, um...
It's pretty standard, isn't it?
It, it is, what, what we added before the language shift, when they're likely to descend below there, we've added projected and within seventy-two hours, so it's, you know... Uh, that, those first seventy-two hours are critical in the street for the concrete.
Maybe I'm not reading right, but to me, the two sentences conflict. Descend below thirty-two degrees within seventy-two hours after placement, and the next one says, if concrete is not protected, insulated for seventy-two hours...
Be below forty-five, there's a pay factor.
Uh, that, I'm...
So you can pour it, if you meet the first criteria, uh, but then you have to protect it, as I'm reading it. And if you fail to protect it with the blankets, and the temperature crosses below forty-five degrees, you have to pay the city fifty percent of the cost of the concrete, is that right, Corey?
Yes, and that goes into the maintenance budget.
But the idea that, that once the, the green concrete was exposed to that temperature, you know, it was somehow compromised, and it's not gonna last as long, is how I'm understanding it.
Yeah.
Doesn't put us, like, outside of the norm for other cities or anything, does it?
No, no, and we have people, we have had people bring out heaters and blankets to leave it overnight so the ground doesn't freeze, but they're still pouring when the temperature is not freezing. Because if it gets much below that, your surface is freezing pretty quick. Concrete puts off heat and has it...
The first, the first night's not the critical one, it's usually the second.
Yeah.
Because it is creating heat as it cures.
Yeah. Uh, more, we didn't specify what type of concrete for thrust blocks, that's, I'm pretty simple. Electricals were clar- clarifying, we have trouble sometimes with contractors, excavators that aren't electricians, putting in conduit and things like that, and where inspector from the electric department goes out, they, they don't speak the same language. So they're requiring that all electrical facilities are installed in the supervision of a licensed electrical contractor.
What's your definition for facilities, right there, do you know?
Um...
Is that your infrastructure, electrical?
That's mainline infrastructure, this isn't...
It's not the house, or, uh-huh?
No, I mean, these construction standards don't apply to the home, where the service line is going to be, too, that, that kinda goes with the building code, but this is our mainline.
The, the stuff the city would be, would buy, or be responsible for afterwards, needs to, right?
The city's infrastructure. So our, our main service lines.
What do you think, Brad, does that look right?
Yeah, I, I, they wanna...
Since you do it for a living.
No, that, the city needs to have that protected, because they, they have to maintain it, make sure it's done right to begin with, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and how thick, you know, conduits turn up into the transformers and exactly how they like them, an excavator doesn't fit it.
They use plumbing fitting sometimes for the elbows.
Um, this is something that's commonly done, but wasn't necessarily clarified, when we have a traffic signal pole, we wanna ensure that there's street lights on all, on the top of all them, because you drive downtown, you see that they all do, but... That was the recommendation, clarify that.
So, um, traffic signal poles, so at a semi-for, sometimes you've got four poles, how many of those would have lights on?
All of them.
So, so everyone would have an extension with a light on it? Okay.
And, and that's always been the case, because video detection is traditionally used.
Okay. Yeah.
Now that we have radar detection, you wouldn't necessarily need the light, but from a safety standpoint, I mean, that's gonna be a easier intersection, crosswalks, we really want that without.
So is, that's not be, that hasn't been done up to this date, but this changes it?
In practice, yes, we haven't specified that necessarily, so it...
Okay. So it, this is...
I don't expect this changes anything that's been done out in the field at all, um, but there was a request to clarify that that will be required, and, and in the code. And I believe we're about done.
I think it is, last one.
Brad, you can interpret this for us. Um...
Okay.
Th- these are actually communication recommendations at SFCN, they're, they're working on converting the system to fiber, so some of the splitters...
Yeah, they're...
Uh, they need to go to the one gigahertz.
Yeah.
And then they're also, thi- this is, uh, it's a should, I think it's to help people understand that they're recommending that one inch PVC conduit be installed to the home communication panel for fiber optic, um, installation. And I, that's not meant as a requirement, but it should, if you want fiber, you really need that, and...
So you're saying that won't be requirement necessarily, or will be? It should be, if that's what they're wanting, if they want fiber, and the city's gotta maintain it?
This would be fiber into the home.
Right, so you need the one inch conduit going into the home?
Yeah.
So it's not a, a direct buried fiber, or something?
I guess what I'm saying is, we're not dictating that people have fiber in their home.
But if they plan to, it'd be a lot cheaper to do it right now, instead of trying to dig up the yards later?
Yes.
Because you do require the fiber to be in a conduit?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the intent here is that you can pull it in.
Right, after the fact.
I believe that is the end.
Thanks, Corey.
There's some drawings in there that are pretty, the only drawing that maybe would interest you, we, along our roads, we've had an eight foot trail that changed with the LID stuff last year. We've had some trainees at parks and we're actually spending time saying, we really need to affect them, so we're gonna have to...
Thank you. So that's the opportunity, um, commissioners to, uh, provide any additional input to the staff, um, before it goes to public hearing in June. And then we will, uh, go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda, which is a discussion about a sign amendment for Title Five.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, Title Five doesn't require public hearings, and, um, we probably won't bring this change to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, so I just wanted to talk with you about it tonight. If any of you guys have any thoughts or concerns, I'd love to hear them, and we'll do what we can to address them, but, uh, unlike Title Fifteen, again, um, by law, we're not required to bring it by you guys, but you know that typically, we have talked about signage things. These are signs that are sometimes called shingle signs, sometimes they're called blade signs, our ordinance calls them projecting signs, which just means they're perpendicular to a wall versus maybe a wall sign that's parallel to a wall.
Right, or on the wall.
Adhered to, yep, that kind of a thing, come in all different types of styles, if you look at our main street, you'll see a lot of different ones that exist today. For a long time, the city didn't allow these types of signs, um, and a few years ago, we started to allow them again. But we did so with a restriction that they cannot hang over a public right-of-way.
Longways.
Um, so if you picture, for example, along Main Street, where we have a lot of buildings that are maybe within a foot or two in the downtown area of the property line, um, that doesn't give anybody much of an opportunity to use a projecting sign. Which incidentally, a lot of times, it's these historic parts of communities where...
Yeah.
These signs really work well, for a lot of different reasons, so we like the idea of seeing maybe more of these kinds of signs, and less of the, the wall cabinet kind of signs, the things that maybe are, are more typically expected in suburban kinds of areas. Um, but in order to, to really allow people to make use of this, we need to allow them to hang over the public right-of-way some amount, in my opinion. Um, and therefore, we're suggesting that we allow for the signs to extend to the public right-of-way by six feet, is what we've talked about so far, so long as there's a, a certain clearance from the sidewalk to the bottom of the sign, I think with what Kim sent you, I might have suggested that be ten feet, and that's hills. Um, something we're discussing, not simply... um, something we're discussing. Not simply to, to some extent to protect the sign from people that are walking by. Likewise, to protect people that are maybe riding bikes or walking by from.
Was the reason that the city didn't allow them before, was that a liability reason? That they were afraid that the possibility of them falling? And so, you know, that, that probably still exists. Um, are you thinking of adding some seismic requirement that would do a backup in case there was a, a sign that, uh, the, that the normal supports broke? And this, and would let the sign down, that there would be something seismically built in that would hold it? I know with light fixtures, that's required now. All your high-beat light fixtures, yeah. They're, they're supported, but you have to have a seismic chain that supports them as well. So if they would fall, then, then there's a backup.
I had not thought about that at all. We hadn't thought about that at all. I'll talk to the building official about that tomorrow. Just to get his thoughts on, on that aspect of having something hanging out above where people.
Yeah, you, it's something that is simple. It's, it's like an aircraft cable or something that is really strong, but you don't notice it.
Gotcha.
So anyway.
Um, incidentally, and this may be more urban legend than anything else. I think some of the things that Dave Oiler told me over the years probably fit into that category. But, uh, according to him, we had issues decades ago where somebody had a projecting sign that they were happy with. And then the neighboring business installed a new projecting sign that obscured the view of the other one. And from that perspective, I understand that at some point in time, the city just said, enough, you know, we're done.
Well, there's probably something you could do to prevent that by saying you can't have it so close to your property line that it.
And we thought a little bit about that, and, and that still is on the table, some kinda.
To protect one, uh, person from another, or, you know, one.
I think our best, our best, um, defense there simply is the size requirement, though. If we limit the size, then given even, even the least amount of fringe that some of the buildings have downtown, which is twenty feet, um, I think there's ample room, maybe by varying the height or something like that a little bit, to provide the kind of view corridor that somebody would, would feel like they need to.
I think these are a lot more attractive, and you can do more with this type of a projecting sign than something just stuck on the wall.
I completely agree, and I think, you know, these really are the types of signs that, for example, the CPAC group that was here last year.
Yeah.
This is the, the type of ambiance, or these are signs that would contribute to the type of, of look and feel that we really hope to eventually see downtown. So that's the, that's the proposed change, to allow them to extend over the public right-of-way. It's that simple. Um.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to explain this, knowing that you don't have to. I'd like us to be involved in these decisions. I would, I just looked at the, um, or refer to the proposal for it, the Title V, and I don't see anything in, in relation to cosmetics or color. And I think we might need to protect ourselves. I don't need neon green, neon yellow, and I'm not, but I think it needs to be something that, um.
Taste.
That, yeah, but how do we write that? So I might suggest the coloring of the, that it meets the coloring of the existing facade or the earth tones or something. We need something to protect ourselves from some crazy sign.
I, I would agree with the spirit of it.
Any, any concerns in at least exploring that a little bit?
Well.
Design standard?
Well, I, I think of, you know, someplace you might go down in San Francisco to maybe some of the different type of partners that would have some real exotic looking signs, and I'd go, I don't think that fits our town, so.
But on the other hand, somebody might, might extend an arm out from the wall and just put a vinyl banner on it, which has happened here.
So I mean, um. So there ought to be some constraint of, uh, and direction on, on the SI, I think. Just don't open it up and say, yeah, anything protruded out there is fine.
I, I guess my thought there, just to throw this out, and I appreciate you bringing that up, but, uh, uh, this is my knee-jerk reaction. For example, I've got a meeting tomorrow morning with, uh, business operators and property owners downtown. I'd love to suggest to them that, and I, I, I hate really formal committee kinds of situations, but I'd love to suggest to them that we get a few of them together that might really care about signage, maybe with a few planning commissioners that really care about signage, and talk about creating some standards that they themselves as business owners and property owners downtown can support and buy into, and that it's something that you guys, you know, feel comfortable with and maybe strongly about.
Thinking it's important, thinking it's important to support the Downtown Alliance and get them involved in decisions and be a good group.
I think that'd be very productive.
The lighting of the sign may want some discussion whether, I mean, there's all kinds of things you can do, you know, for lighting the sign. It might be interior, it might be something exterior, and that sometimes is as massive as the sign itself, so.
I'd almost say no lighting on these signs.
Um, I think that would be a real challenge for the, for the businesses if there's no lighting.
Well, if.
Now, you can have lighting that you basically don't see, uplighting, um, different things like that. Even, I mean, there are some really attractive, none of these are backlit signs even.
Yeah.
Um, uh, you know, I'll tip my hand a little bit. When it comes to, to the type of signs that I think doesn't work with the kind of urban form that we have downtown, it's just your cabinet, you know, where it's backlit. And that could be a projecting sign or a wall sign. Um, but I, yeah, lighting's definitely an important thing.
Electronic signs, LEDs, they're all, I mean, we gotta be careful that we don't.
Along with temporary signs, you know, window signage, if you, uh, take a look at, uh, some of the shops downtown, um, they may have a full, you know, class storefront, but you can't see inside the shop because it's all probably doing temporary signage. Different things like that that I, I would love to just talk through with any of you that wanna be involved and, again, some of those other stakeholders.
I agree, and I support it personally. I won't speak for everybody else. I just would like to be a little bit more, um, detailed about what can and can't be put up.
Yeah, I, I, I really appreciate that. I think what I'm, and I hope I'm reading it right, what I'm hearing you say, it's a, it's a new direction for us to take in terms of what we regulate, so it'd be a totally separate track that we'd be on to do that.
Are you talking about materials used or the look of the sign? When you talk about the uniformity and so forth?
You know, I, um.
Could be both.
Typically, you'd.
We had a uniformity.
You'd address a number of different issues, and you'd, you'd provide, I think, and I think we'd want to here, provide a reasonably broad palette for people to choose from.
Yeah.
I think there are a lot of different ways to.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, this is a, this is a piece of wood here, the beer merchants, um, you know, as opposed to steel. Um, you know, all different kinds of materials you could use, I think. Um, like I said, all different types of ways to light signs.
It just seems tough to say what a business can and can't
So once it's.
with their creativity, unless you're just talking about the materials used.
Yeah, something certainly.
Safety and, I, I mean, to me, you, you wanna look at safety and.
You don't wanna, you don't want to monique, you don't want the same thing.
If it's opened up and, and so you're saying, okay, we're gonna allow this, isn't there a safeguard that this sign has to be approved by somebody before they just throw it up or not?
Today, we issue permits for them, yeah, but primarily, all we're looking at is.
So who, who?
The building code requirements. And I, I check them for size, that's it, today. Because we don't have any regulations relative to outlooks at all.
Is that, you can, that, um, it's not politically correct to have somebody check those and say, this isn't acceptable? I don't know.
Uh, today, we don't have that option because we have no rules that apply.
I know, but I'm just saying, do we want a rule that would apply where it is looked at and said yes or no?
What I heard is we want to at least answer that question. We wanna think about it and, and come up with the prospect maybe of adopting some rules that address how things look.
I think it's kinda like our, uh, high-density project that we just worked on is, is.
Yeah.
We're going down this new road of high-density, and, and we spent a lot of time in talking about roof angles and landscaping and garages and overhangs, and this is a new direction you're going. I, me personally, I think any one of those in my own mind would be acceptable.
Yeah.
But you could also throw up some that might not be acceptable, and I, I think by having some generic ground rules, it, it saves that, it, it saves that person that's gonna be judgmental that says, this works or this don't work, at least. I mean, the way it reads right now, it can be out ten feet from the wall, you know, it, it's just, like to your point, they could put up a vinyl banner. And, and that.
If it meets the size requirement, we issue the permit. We don't have a choice.
You got that thing flapping around and being tore and.
Most signage will be not done by a tenant owner, it'll be done by some commercial company that is working with them and designing the sign and putting it up.
Well, I, this would be interesting, you know, at any time you'd like. I mean, it was last fall when six or seven of us, Lamont Levitt has a building just this side of, uh, Madera's. Uh, we took a walk up to his place and a walk back on the other side of str- of the street, and just looked at signage. And there's everything under the sun there today, and, you know, it, it's a subjective issue. Some people like certain things, some people don't. But I do think that there would be consensus reached about certain things that we think contribute positively to what, you know, eventually we hope to see downtown, and certain things that really detract from it. And those are the things I think we try to identify, you know, what, what's making a positive difference and what's maybe not. Um, so again, I mean, if you guys are comfortable with that, I'll, I'll talk to that group tomorrow and just try to pick some times when we can get together. That would be, that would be a really fun project to do until the first person comes in and I say. That's eventually part of it.
Exactly.
Um, may I touch on one other thing really quickly? Um, we have started to handle storm drain. Storm water, maybe is a better way to say what I'm thinking, a little bit differently in recent years, where now water somehow gets into the ground a little bit quicker than it used to. Um, at the same time, we're keeping more water on site in a lot of cases, but, um, uh, up until recently, the water that was kept on site typically was, was detained in an above-ground pond of some kind, you know, typically it was just a grass depression on a site. And with that, um, a lot of times, it was those detention spaces that are landscaped, and typically, they're pretty attractive. People mow them and stuff, and they look good. Having that space on a site was how people met our landscaping requirements for projects. Um, and we're finding now where people are able to use their property more efficiently because they don't need that basin on their sites as often anymore. That, um, for example, with professional office uses, having thirty percent of the site dedicated to landscaping is getting harder. Um, so simply put, I'm gonna recommend next month in a text amendment that we change that standard from thirty percent to twenty-five percent, um, which I don't believe is enough of a difference that any of us probably, looking at a developed site, are gonna really notice a difference. Um, we keep all of the, the site-specific landscaping reg- regulations in place. So for example, next to parking lots, we require a ten-foot landscape strip and trees every thirty feet, like we do along streets. That all stays the same. All I'm suggesting is that we reduce the overall area requirement um, for certain types of projects from thirty percent to twenty-five percent. Still, twenty-five percent of a site being landscaped, um, I think provides great opportunity for somebody to do something that looks great. Um, that, that really is an asset for the community, but, uh, um, at the same time, that, that gets a little bit more building square footage probably on some sites. Uh, maybe in some situations, some, some more parking that is useful. And I think using that space more efficiently is probably beneficial for the city as well, so, um, just a heads up that.
What's, we, we discussed this some time ago, and I think they were using the example of volunteer drive on how they were retaining water instead of pumping it into a, a, a system where it was collected and moved someplace else, but they retained it. And, you know, those are nice landscaped areas down along the road, all the way along Volunteer Drive there. There's, underneath is what you're not seeing, is there's engineered, uh, structures to, 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 to handle the water and then dissipate it in the ground. How well has all that been working?
It's been really well, um.
So.
So, so maybe some of the idea behind why we pursued some of that, um, they call it low-impact development. Really, the idea is keeping the main water on-site instead of just piping it to rivers. Because that creates problems. In the last permit with, uh, the storm water pollution prevention plans, the, the state DQ requires, the last permit they had with the EPA said, all the cities are gonna work in low-impact development, but it didn't quantify how much or how or why. So everyone was just saying, well, we don't know what we're supposed to do, and you don't really have a criteria. The new per- permit that just got approved says that you will.
Now, when you say permit that got approved, that's for who, what cities? Or is that a state thing?
The state has a permit with the EPA, and then we have a permit with the state, so.
So.
We can spend days, but, but we're an MS four city that basically we come under some federal regulations and we have to acquire.
So if somebody was wanting to do an office building someplace, say, and they've got a couple of acres that they've gotta handle the, the runoff from storm are, are they able to say, we're gonna do this locally and not run it into a river someplace, or?
And they have to. It's basically.
The, the latest permit I ever acquired, you basically have to keep the ninetieth percentile storm. Um, and, and we haven't quite got into calculating what that is yet. You have to keep that ninetieth percentile storm on-site. And if you don't.
When you say ninetieth, you mean the, the worst, or scenario?
No, you, you take all the storms in the history that you have collected, and the ninetieth percentile, so meaning
You handle.
ninety percent of storms meet.
But this'll do.
So it, it's not the hundred-year of these big storms. But, but it's a significant amount. We're required to keep that on-site. Some places we can't, and you have to kinda give justification why that doesn't happen.
So that's the direction the state and the cities in the state are going to go, is not putting a lot of storm drain piping in, in anymore, but just handle it all locally?
And, and, yeah, where a lot of cities throughout Utah at least, and beyond there, i- it's kind of a nebulous, we don't know what to do, and it, it's kinda hard because it's a whole different way of thinking in, in the storm drain world. Um, it's one of the things, you know, that.
And did you say it's probably cost-effective, or it doesn't cost more than running the trunk lines?
It, it is. What happens is, is your pipes get smaller. From a city standpoint, instead of a thirty-six-inch trunk line, that might be an eighteen-inch.
Okay.
Um, very balancing.
Thanks for explaining this to me, I appreciate it. Our, uh, we're, we're thinking of a thing in Springville, and they're wanting us to run this storm line clear over to a location that's through people's property and everything else, it's just, and so I'm just wondering if there's an alternative. So anyway, thank you.
There, there certainly is. Every municipality looks at it differently. Groundwater's an issue, there's a lot, but sure, it's possible.
So anyway, I don't think that's gonna be a noticeable change, but that's just, like I said, a quick end to. That's it for me.
Are there any other questions from the commission for staff tonight?
I was wondering, was there any follow-up to the letter that was sent to the Canyon Creek about signage not being used and how soon it might be used and?
I didn't expect a response, and I haven't gotten one.
Okay, okay.
Um, I will say that.
Maybe I'll write another one.
Shortly after that, I saw one sign go in place, which I wondered if that was a direct result or not.
Which one's that?
Leaders.
Oh.
Um, but, uh, incidentally, I mean, uh, for what this is worth, this is something I really don't like talking about because I might've said the same thing a couple of years ago, and things wouldn't have panned out, but it does look like, um, the developer there is getting ready to start with another phase or two on the project.
Would very.
Yeah, um, best-case scenario, the stores would be open about this time next year, so.
What side of the highway?
Uh, what we're talking about now is entirely on the north side, yeah.
Okay.
You've seen Food for Less building coming down visually.
So what's going in, did you say?
Um.
He hasn't said.
There'll be.
Oh, I missed that part.
There's a reason why he's not saying.
They show us, uh, a restaurant, an ice steak house restaurant there, like, I think the Outback or Blue River or something was shown in that area, it seemed to me like.
We talked about every, every red meat purveying business.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. But these, these are actually shown on Woodbury's, uh.
There's a lot of things that he shows, and.
Yeah.
And I, you know, we appreciate the work that they're doing, um.
I have that, in fact.
And they're.
Yeah, you gave it to us.
Yeah. The mayor gave it to me, and I'm thinking, are you kidding, they're gonna put all this in?
Yeah.
Well, it was a surprise, they didn't.
By nature, to do what they do, you have to be really, really optimistic, and, uh, that's what we've seen.
He's good at coming up to planning meetings and city council meetings, and talking a talk, and I'm calling you out.
It's time to show us, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we've heard.
Mr. Woodbury is, I've met, dealt with him for five years, talk, talk, talk.
We've heard similar things in years past, honestly, relative to.
It's all the money with them, if the economy's not gonna work for it, then whatever they told you, they're not gonna probably do.
The issues that we're working on now to address.
Economy's booming the last three years, fastest growing developing economy in the nation right now.
It really seems as though they're ready to start on and the next phase, so, maybe more than one phase. And I'll, I'll do everything I can to keep you posted, I just don't want to be a part of building an expectation.
It's kind of funny.
Then one more.
I'm gonna go home and tell everybody what I learned at this meeting.
So, one more, one more proposal, um, if it's okay with you guys, we'd like to propose with Memorial Weekend, and, uh, the next city, or commission meeting is on the first, we'd like to propose to move it to the seventh?
Eighth, it would be, I was wrong the day when I mentioned seventh.
The eighth?
Eighth is the one today.
Is there any objection to moving?
Second, Lindsey?
It is, yeah. It helps us from a couple other perspectives, me personally, I'm gonna be out of town on the first, um, which if you have a plan B, if you guys really want to meet on the first, but, um.
Good.
That keeps us the day after the city council meeting, which.
Good, good, good.
So, that's June eighth, June eighth instead of the first.
There's four of us that say yes, so we'll move it to the eighth.
Great, I appreciate that.
Anything the city council would do with the seventh?
Uh, it would be, seventh is the first.
And with that, I'd make a motion to close this meeting. Any objection to closing the meeting? Meeting closed.